Hello, everybody. Welcome to the August 11th, 2025 Joint Planning Board and Legislative Matters Committee Meeting. This is a meeting held in joint, in hybrid format, both in person and on Zoom. And this meeting will be recorded for later broadcast on Comcast Channel 15 and uploaded to the Northampton Government Video Archive on YouTube for your later viewing pleasure. And so if we can call the meeting to order and call a roll call of both bodies.
Sure. For Legislative Matters, Counselor Elkins.
Here.
Counselor Perry.
Here.
Counselor Jarrett.
Here.
Counselor Mayori is, I mean, and, 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 we can call that, try to go ahead with the Planning Board. George, member Cohow.
Here.
Member White.
Here.
Okay, member DeKai. Here, member Roach.
Here.
Any else present?
So we have a quorum?
Yeah.
Okay, then we have a quorum of both bodies. I already said it, but the, just to say again, because it's, this is on the place on the agenda, that this meeting is being audio and video recorded. This is the point on the agenda for public comment. However, if you are here to speak about the, for the public hearing, the item that's up for hearing, I would ask for you to save that until later. But if you have any other general comment you would like to make, now is the time. So is there anybody in the room that wants to make general public comment? Anybody?
Sorry, did you say people are speaking to the legislative change, the zoning change should wait?
Yeah, should wait until the, until the hearing.
Sorry.
And I have a few people on here. Everybody who signed up is here about what, the matter that's on the hearing, the zoning amendment, correct? Are you here for general public comment?
Okay.
Oh, okay.
I don't think everyone will.
Okay, that's fine. Let's, yeah, we'll, we'll leave it up for the moment. All right. So it does not appear that anybody has general public comment. So we have the brief matter of minutes of the September 30th, 2024 meeting. That was a long time ago. And July 17th, 20, oh, we don't have, we only have, so the meetings, minutes of the September 30th, 2024 meeting. And that's, that was just a Legislative Matters meeting. So Planning Board, just give us a minute. Do I hear a motion from anyone on Legislative Matters to approve the minutes from September 30th, 2024?
Make a motion.
I'd second that.
Everyone voting is present, so all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And none opposed, so those meetings minutes are adopted. All right. All right. So the next thing on the, on the agenda is a public hearing on a proposed zoning change. And so what we have on is joint public hearing of City Council Committee on Legislative Matters and the Planning Board in city council chambers here at 212 North Hampton Main Street. And this refers to a package of amendments reducing minimum off-street motor vehicle parking requirements in URA, URB, URC, SRRR, WSAP, WSP, and OI districts, and Section 350-8.1, and adjusting bicycle parking requirements in Section 350-8.11, and amending Section 350-2.1 open space definition. Can I have a motion from somebody on Legislative Matters to open the hearing?
I would move to open the hearing.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
None opposed, the meeting is open. And open your meeting. We're fancier when it's joint.
We don't normally take a vote to open the meeting, but are happy to do so in this case. Can I have a motion to open the hearing?
Move.
Sir, is, all those in favor? Everybody.
Very good, the meeting is open. Before we begin, I'm going to go over how, a little bit about the item that's before us and how I want to conduct the hearing. So this meeting is, this meeting is, was referred, was introduced in City Council on July 11th, 2025, and referred as required by the City Charter to Legislative Matters and the Planning Board. It was also referred to the Housing Partnership, which I can report gave the matter a positive recommendation at a special meeting this morning. That was a meeting they held to, in order to have quorum to be able to vote on that recommendation. And they were previously discussed in a, in a recorded meeting, but they didn't have quorum, so they couldn't, they couldn't vote on anything. But that discussion was interesting, you're certainly, I believe it's open, and open for viewing. And so, and this hearing, per Mass General Law, Chapter 40A, Section 5, was published in the Daily Hampshire Gazette on July 28th, 2025, and August 4th, 2025. So we are properly convened. Here's how the hearing will be conducted. We're going to first hear from the sponsors of the legislation. That would be myself and Counselor Jarrett to just present a little bit about the legislation and our rationales for bringing it, and, and give a just sort of general introduction. We're going to hear from Director Mish regarding proposed legislation. Doesn't need to be anything lengthy, but just an opportunity to let us know Plannings, the Planning Department's position on the legislation. Following the presentations or remarks, we'll hear from the public. Folks will have three minutes to comment on the legislation and to ask questions. Alex will keep time, and can I get, last time, somebody to take notes of questions that come up during public comment, sir? Thanks, Jenna. When you come to the podium, please state your name, city of residence, and whether you support or oppose the legislation, if you have a position. Sometimes I do all in favor and then all opposed, but this time I think I'll just, we'll just go, but just please, if you can, preface your remarks if, if you have a decided position one way or the other, in advance, so we kind of know where you're coming from. Following the present, oh, sorry, after everyone who wishes to speak has had an opportunity, deliberating bodies will have a discussion and raise questions, raise questions that we have. And during this period of discussion, we will address relevant questions raised by the public during the comment period, and by email, and by deliberating, and by the deliberating bodies. Questions will be put to the people present best able to answer them. After the two bodies are satisfied that they've gathered enough information from the presentations and questions have been answered, we will close the public hearing. At that time, we will begin deliberation of any proposed recommendations. The public does not participate in board and committee deliberations, and no one from the public will be recognized to speak during the deliberation discussion and vote. The two bodies considering the ordinance change of the Planning Board and the City Council Legislative Matters Committee, that committee is Counselors Perry, Mayori, who's not with us tonight, Jarrett, and myself. We meet jointly, the Planning Board and Legislative Matters, for the sake of efficiency, but each body votes separately. The vote will be taken, the vote we will be taking, each body, will be for a recommendation back to the full council, either positive, negative, or neutral. The Planning Board recommendation is merely advisory, and neither recommendation is binding on the full council, or even on individual counselors. Votes can, can change between the committee meeting and the full council meeting. A note to, to everyone participating at this hearing. This hearing pertains to the proposed zoning change brought by the sponsors. The proposed legislation will not affect any currently pending project. While it is surely the case that our knowledge of current and past projects may inform our thinking about this proposed legislation, I ask that people limit their remarks and questions to how the proposed change would affect the city generally, without assumptions about whether passage of this proposed zoning change would or would not affect any currently pending project. I encourage all to focus on what is persuasive, factual, and explanatory, and remind all that the, that civil discourse is not just neighborly and kind, but it is also the most persuasive way to get your point across. So with that, let's go. So.
So I'm.
That's us, let's go.
Yeah, thanks. I'm happy to share my screen, and I'd like to read the, the whereas portions of the, of the, which sort of lays the case for the ordinance. So this is 25.300, an ordinance reducing minimum off-street motor vehicle parking requirements and adjusting bicycle parking requirements. Whereas unneeded off-street motor vehicle parking requirements add thousands of dollars per outdoor space and as much as $50,000 per garage space to the cost of housing and to the cost of doing business. And?
Whereas unneeded motor vehicle parking fills up land that could be used for green space, trees, parks, more housing, businesses, or community amenities, and?
Whereas requiring motor vehicle parking that is not needed is a subsidy of car ownership at the expense of transit and other modes, which is at odds with our climate goals. While bicycle parking requires little space, promotes non-motor vehicle travel, and furthers our, furthers our climate goals, and?
Whereas motor vehicle parking adds to the urban heat island effect and increases stormwater runoff, and?
Whereas developers prefer to provide as much parking as needed to satisfy market conditions, but not more to avoid increased construction costs.
And, and whereas the Unlocking Housing Production Commission, appointed by Governor Maury Healy to study and report on, quote, "how to state, how state and local laws, regulations, and practices could be revised so as to increase the supply of housing that is affordable across a wide range of incomes and available throughout a broad spectrum of neighborhoods," end quote, recommended in its February 2025 report, quote, "eliminating parking requirements statewide for any residential use," end quote, and?
Whereas parking management techniques such as metered parking, limited time parking, monthly permits, or residential parking permits can be used to address the availability of on-street parking in neighborhoods, particularly those within walking distance of downtown and village centers, and?
Whereas new parking management techniques and revenues can be used to further enhance street, bicycle, and sidewalk maintenance.
Then be it ordained by the City Council as follows. So now I'd like to just summarize the changes that are referenced here. So the, it changes in most of the residential districts, the minimum parking for residential uses, it's to simply one space per unit instead of two spaces when it's more than 1,000 square feet, which is what it currently is. So it just simplifies that. It also does that in the Office Industrial District, which allows residential over the first floor, and then goes down to, adjusts it generally, and also adjusts multifamily dwellings for elderly and people with disabilities, lodging house dormitory, single-room occupancy and halfway house to 2,000, it's basically one space for every 2,000 square feet of gross floor area. In the central business and central business side districts, it removes the, the, there are some uses that still require parking in those districts, however, it removes those, and the rationale for that is that there is public parking available, whether in the parking garage or in the mini lots in, in central business, and that, that can be an impediment to opening those businesses, because in order to put in that parking, you may not have the space to be able to do the very thing that you want to do. So going down through those, it adjusts the definition of open space, and it will read, open space is "the space on a lot unoccupied that buildings or structured, structures, unobstructed to the sky by man-made objects. The following, not devoted to streets, driveways, off-street parking, or loading spaces, and expressed as a percentage of the total lot area, do not count against the open space calculations." So those are walks, swimming pools, dedicated, open, or covered bicycle parking that is visible on at least one side, and terraced areas. And so the, the difference there, there's some, it changes the wording to try to make it clearer. The difference is that the dedicated, open, or covered bicycle parking is added to the open space definition. And we have, we have a small amendment that will be talked, bringing a little bit later, which just uses the word grounds, what is it, Carolyn, grounds level patios, instead of terraced areas. Yeah. Then we move to bicycle parking, and, and this clarifies that in the central business core district, a bicycle parking is only required for new buildings, additional or enlargement of existing buildings for residential use. And then the changes that are made are, one space per dwelling unit of residential, and for hotel, motel, and bed and breakfast, it's 10% of the number of parking spaces or rooms, whichever is greater. Makes some adjustments to office, hospital, other medical use, and manufacturing, industrial utility, and these, these are actually reductions, instead of a tenth of a space per 1,000 square feet, it is two spaces per 10,000 square feet. And that's the end. Stop the share. And we just wanted to make a couple of other points. I think most of them were made, but the, you know, the question of, I think of it as we get what we build for, and when we require more parking, we raise the cost of housing, the cost of doing business, we invite people who have more cars to live there. When we require less, the cost of construction is less, and we invite people who have fewer cars. So, and I wanted to share a map that shows currently the number of vehicles per a living unit. And, because I think this is, this is helpful to kind of see where we're at currently, and understand that we may be able, that through ordinances such as this, we can shift the people, the, the amounts as well. So let me see, I will share my screen again and share this map. Okay, so this is the map of the city, and the yellow areas are where their, the current vehicles per living unit are between .3 and 1.04. So we can see that's a lot of the downtown area, Florence, the very center of Florence, some areas to the north, such as River Run, it looks like, and Hampshire Heights, and Village Hill. And then moving outward from those areas, the average is between 1.05 and 1.39. So that's a large majority of the city. And then when we move up to the more suburban and rural areas, it's 1.4 to 1.92. So, and these, these are averages, and one of the points I think that we are trying to make in supporting this is that these, that even though having two or more spaces may be right for some folks, and maybe in their needs, we shouldn't impose that upon every housing unit, that people should get to decide and get therefore to pay for, in the construction costs, the number of parking spaces that they needed with currently a minimum of one, if this passes. So I'll hand it over to Marissa to add more.
I don't know that I have a, a ton more to add, except for that, that one of the things that really interests me, interests me about this legislation and what we hope to accomplish is that some of the zoning reforms that we passed in the last, in the last few years, including two-family-by-right throughout the entire city, that, that one of the things that people working on housing issues talk about are with poison pills, things that make it impossible for, for people to take advantage of, of the zoning legislation, of zoning reforms that have been put in place. Parking comes up perennially again and again, as, as a, as a thing that can make the difference between somebody building a housing unit that they, as, with as much housing and as much places to put people as, as they want to build. And in particular, especially in more, closer to downtown and, and, you know, closer in, where there is, where the lot sizes are smaller, they can accommodate the two-family-by-right in terms of our proportions, but it's the open space and the parking requirement that can make it, make the difference between them being able to add, add that two-family-by-right, or add that additional unit that they want to use, and not. And so I'm, I was particularly interested in us removing a barrier where we could, going forward, to make changes that we've made in the, in recent years, more user-friendly and more accessible, both to people who are investing in our community and, and developing, but also current property owners who are living in their homes and might consider taking advantage of this legislation to build that additional, that additional housing, an extra parking spot that they don't need might stand in the way of. So things come up, I'm sure we'll have more to add to that, but I think those were the main things. So Carolyn, if you want to, and you don't, don't feel the need to speak at length, but just if you want to sort of weigh in on, on Planning Department's general take on it.
Sure. I think for a number of years, our office and along with the Planning Board have looked at parking trends and evaluating our zoning, and thinking about sort of what it means for trying to encourage both housing, but also not overburden the housing market. So going back to 2011, I think is when the first change to parking for downtown, the central business district, was implemented by City Council, and that is where most of the minimum parking requirements were removed for the central business district. And then on the heels of that, there were other districts that also, and not just for residential, but generally parking, minimum parking requirements for commercial uses as well, for example, in the highway business district, or the general industrial district, or even planned village. So this isn't the first step, and I think as we've done many, over the years, is start this and evaluate it incrementally. And so I think this is sort of the next incremental step to getting to a place that creates more flexibility for people, so it's not a burden. It doesn't force people to, for residential uses, to create only one parking space, but it gives that opportunity to provide that. And that is consistent with many studies around the country that reveal that people who are entering the workforce now and are younger than our generation are not buying cars as soon as they get out of school, they're not, they're moving to places where they're not forced to have vehicles. And so there's a little bit of a, currently a mismatch if the trends are showing that, you know, people now are not sort of seeking that mode of transportation, but are trying to move to places that have alternative ways for people to get around. So the mismatch is that if we were requiring these two vehicles per unit, but in fact, people more and more are not opting for that, then I think we see that as a problem. So I would just leave it at that, I guess.
All right, very good. Okay, so now we will go to hearing from the public, and now I'll take that sheet. Thank you, sir. All right. And like I said, we will go between in-person and, and online, and like I said, if you can, like I said, name where you're from, and if, if you have a position, don't feel, don't feel like you must have a position, but if you do have a position, let us know, it can be helpful to help us keep track. All righty, so I'm going to start here in the room with Chris Tagerian.
Is the green light on there?
It is now. Actually, my daughter's trying to get on Zoom right now, but the link is not working, or there is no link. I just checked the website and the instructions don't.
It's on, it's on the agenda itself?
I, the agenda says to go to northhamptonma.gov, and?
There's, so there's two items listed. One is the public hearing notice, and then the second is the actual agenda. So I think that's the confusion. So if?
I'll, I'll proceed.
Okay.
We won't count this against your time.
So she's, yeah, she's off the grid right now, and I think she's trying to listen, but she's not in a situation where she can talk, so I'm here, and in, in place of my 17-year-old daughter, who's a student at NHS, and is on the Mayor's Youth Commission, and has been very involved in these matters, working with Mr. Jarrett. So her statement is, "I'm Helen Tagerian, a 17-year-old resident of Sunderland, who is school choiced into Northampton High School, where I'm a rising senior. While I do not speak on behalf of the Northampton Youth Commission, as our interim co-chair and the Chair of the Housing and Sustainability Committee, I work on issues such as parking mandates in Northampton. I speak as someone deeply involved in the Northampton community who works and meets with various groups on matters that I care deeply about, and who has friends who've had to move due to unaffordable housing in Northampton. Counselor Alex Jarrett and Marissa Elkins have proposed an ordinance on off-street parking minimum reduction. This would undoubtedly benefit Northampton in a myriad of ways. Why do I say undoubtedly? Because going a step past reduction and eliminating parking mandates altogether has proven its efficacy across the United States in multiple cities, and even in an entire state, Oregon. A wealth of research, such as studies conducted by the Sightline Institute, provide concrete evidence in support of reduced, reducing or eliminating parking minimums. In recent years, Oregon's population has boomed. Between 2010 and 2020, there was an increase of more than 400,000 people. However, housing in the state only increased by about 150,000. This understandably posed a problem, and kickstarted a series of housing and parking reforms that began in 2019. Three years later, in 2022, Oregon banned parking minimums, minimums in a historic and unanimous vote. This was the largest rollback to parking mandates in U.S. history. The state government reasoned that, because of the cookie cutter approach of mandates, parking is often overbuilt, adding unnecessary costs, while pushing apart buildings and making areas less walkable. A better approach is to let the free market provide parking where there is demand. Experience shows lenders usually require sufficient off-street parking, and developers will build it. This rollback generated a dramatic increase in monthly housing permits for two-to-four-unit buildings in Oregon, as well as countless other benefits. I want to clarify that the ordinance that will be discussed today will not eliminate parking mandates, but only reduce them. Furthermore, it encourages bicycle parking by removing the open space deterrent. I believe this to be an important first step to creating incremental change that will have positive overarching results in Northampton."
And that's, that's time, if you can finish your sentence.
Yeah, actually, there's one sentence left. If numerous other cities and even a state have seen that reducing and even eliminating minimum parking requirements benefited them on numerous fronts, why shouldn't Northampton do the same, starting with this ordinance? Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you, and thank you to your daughter. Next up online, we have Ruthie.
Hi, I'm Ruthie. Oh, yeah. Okay. Technology. I'm Ruthie Woodring. I live in Florence. And I'm very excited about this potential change. Thanks to Alex Jarrett and Marissa Elkins for their forward-thinking this. Sometimes in the housing co-op where I live, which, by the way, there's like one car for seven people ages 17 to 65, we talk about transportation literacy. What do people know about how to get around? Today, when I was out and about, I saw people traveling on cars, trucks, buses, bikes, people walking, running, a man in the back of a wooden thing, hauling a wooden bike trailer, people rolling in wheelchairs, on e-bikes, electric scooters, bike share bikes, motorcycles. I wanted the guy on that one-wheel thing you stand on playing the electric guitar really loud. I think, well, sometimes like the fear of not having parking, like I think that fear is partly from the, from not knowing what transportation options there are. I want the PVTA is free still. And so, yeah, we make choices based on what options we see available. And I hope that this ordinance can shift how we weigh our options. As someone who doesn't drive, I think I see time and space differently than people who travel in cars regularly. Parking spaces and parking lots, they're hot dead zones that I have to traverse to get somewhere where I can live and breathe. And just super excited to see this and hope it will make, be a step to make Northampton a more livable place for all the reasons that Marissa and Alex have said. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, next in the room, we have Ace Taylor.
Ace Taylor, they/them, Ward 3 of Northampton. I'm qualifiably against this change. I think all the things in support of it, of, you know, for having less parking is an excellent second step, but the reality is our public transit is so anemic, I cannot see a reasonable way at this point in time to have this reduction in requirements. Rhetorically, I would like to ask folks when the last time you rode the bus was, and also to ask, when was the last time you needed to ride the bus? The PVTA is subsidized by the schools. During the school year, it's very easy to get to any place that are on those routes. But to get to East Hampton, it's once an hour. To get to Holyoke, the same. And I'm going to be started on trying to get to Springfield on a weekend. Until the infrastructure for getting places, whether through the PVTA or through municipal busing and taxis, is in place, asking people to bike is not sufficient to make up for that loss of space. Biking is a great personal option, but we do need the infrastructure in place to support this change. And if this does end up going through, I would ask folks to similarly push forward resolutions and ordinances to get that infrastructure in place as soon as we can. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, next up online, we have Jen.
Okay, I think I pressed all the buttons. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. Um, hi, I'm Jen. I live on Union Street, Ward 3. I have both a sort of theoretical interest in this, in this motion, as well as a personal interest in this motion. Uh, I'm a, I'm a big believer that we really need to be building every kind of housing that we can in, in downtown Northampton, increasing density in the downtown, both to mitigate the housing crisis as much as possible and, you know, bring in new neighbors, hopefully eventually lowering costs. And, and I know that this intersects with, this, this proposal intersects with affordability as well. As well as to increase population density and tax base so that, so that our downtown and services and, uh, public transportation and so on can be funded as well as, as well as they need to be. So I'm, I'm a big cheerleader for that theoretically. I'm also someone who just built an ADU myself. Uh, not myself, I didn't have a hammer, but, uh, we managed to import my mother, who is now living about 14 steps away from us in our yard, and we were very fortunate to be able to do so. We were limited by parking when we built it. We were required to have three parking spaces because of the size of our, of our, of the buildings. So that did constrain the building of the, the ADU that we, that we put up, but we were still able to do it. And since, since going through that, I've just been walking around my neighborhood, which, you know, Ward 3 in Northampton is already pretty dense, but there's a lot of wasted space. And I'm very enthusiastically supportive of the, the proposals in the past updating historical, historical buildings and, you know, the two-family-by-right proposals. I would love to see my neighborhood even denser and more full of pedestrians, pedestrians and cyclists and bus riders and wheelchair users. So I'm, I'm both personally and theoretically really in support of this, and I can't wait to see parking space requirements eliminated altogether, but we'll take this for now. Thanks.
Thank you. Uh, next up, we have Gwen Nabod.
Hello, thank you so much. Green light is on. Gwen Nabod from the Northampton Housing Partnership. So I'm here to support this ordinance. And I can read our letter today to the Honorable Members of the Northampton City Council. On behalf of the Northampton Housing Partnership, we are writing to express our strong support for the proposed ordinance 25.300, an ordinance reducing minimum of off-street motor vehicle parking requirements. At our meeting today on Monday, August 11th, the Housing Partnership voted to give this ordinance a positive recommendation. The proposed changes are a vital step toward promoting more affordable housing development in our city. As the ordinance language itself points out, unneeded off-street motor vehicle parking requirements at thousands of dollars per outdoor space and as much as $50,000 per garage space to the cost of housing. By reducing these minimums, we can directly impact the financial feasibility of new housing projects and help lower the overall cost of development. Furthermore, these changes directly address a key constraint on housing production, such as financial feasibility. A perfect example of this is the proposed 33 King Street development by Valley CDC and the Community Builders. The scale and density of this crucial housing project would be nearly impossible to achieve if it were required to provide excessive onsite parking for every unit. We urge the city council to pass ordinance 25.300 and continue to take bold steps to address our housing crisis by increasing housing supply and affordability. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Gwen. Uh, online, we have Sarah Howard.
Hi, thank you. I'm Sarah Howard. I live in Ward 5 in Florence. I am in favor of the ordinance. Thank you very much to the councilors, Elkins and Jarrett for putting it forward. I, I, many of the points that have already been spoken, I agree with. These are the kinds of zoning, zoning changes we need to be making in order to address the pressing issues that we're facing, the crisis in housing and the climate. We have to remove barriers for denser, building more densely, which is also more climate-friendly. As, as far as the, the bus transit system, the thing with that is that the, they have to show, in, show ridership and show a need in order to be able to increase the service, the bus service. So this is just one of those positive feedback loops where if we build for what we want, we're going to attract what we want. And then we're going to, they're going to be able to increase the bus service because there will be that ridership in a dense area, which makes it more feasible for them to serve that area. Also, you know, I do, as a person who has, who for many years did live in public housing, probably at least half of the people that I knew would take the bus regularly and get their need, their needs met. They would, you know, go to the grocery store. I do personally use the public transit very frequently. You know, I can take the, the R44 to the Big Y. I can get to Springfield and back on the G73E. So it's great. I, I recommend it. I love it. I love sitting on the bus with people and meeting new people and seeing the culture there. And I loved, um, thank you Ruthie for all, taking note of all of those different forms of transportation that people are using just in, just today that you'd noticed. And yeah, this is, uh, this is a great incremental step toward, toward making those changes. I would personally like to see the, the parking requirements fully eliminated, but this is, this is a great step. So thank you very much.
Great, thanks, Sarah. In the room, James Lowenthal.
Good afternoon. I'm James Lowenthal. I live at 181 Crescent Street. I am a member of the Bicycle and Pedestrian Committee, but I am speaking only on my own behalf today. I also founded and ran for many years the local chapter of Massachusetts Bicycle Coalition, and I am here to speak in support of the proposed legislation. My family owns a car and we use it. We, we drive it all sorts of places in town, but I don't want more parking, I want less parking. And I disagree with the, the perception we sometimes hear that parking is a nightmare in, in Northampton. I mean, if anybody who's been to Cambridge or Boston or New York City knows that there's just no comparison, and we don't really have the problem that, that is sometimes claimed we have for, for parking here. At the same time, 50%, over 50% of downtown is already paved for parking and, and roadways. And that's just an incredible opportunity lost. And I love the idea of regaining some of that opportunity going forward for what are undeniably really valuable uses of that precious space, including green space, affordable housing, other valuable real estate uses and, and greening of the city. This is not a new issue. The, the book, The High Cost of Free Parking, came out more than 20 years ago by Donald Shoup, an expert on this issue nationally, who points out much of the economics that I think are behind this, I think, very reasonable legislation. Every major planning and visioning document in Northampton in the last 30 years has identified climate change, sustainability, affordable housing, getting away from single occupancy vehicles as central issues for the city's health and livability, and this ordinance will help move us in that direction. As Counselor Jarrett said, we get the transportation that we build for. Most people, even drivers, have bikes and want to use them. The lack of bike parking available is actually one of the top three reasons that, that people usually cite for not riding their bikes. And I really look forward to continuing the city's laudable efforts to promote sustainability and livability and affordability of Northampton through this legislation. Thank you.
Thank you. Online, we have Dan Brindell.
Okay, hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, okay. Um, yeah, so my name's Dan Brindell. I live in Ward 3. I'm downtown. This is pretty sensitive to me. I've spoken to both bodies here today about issues with parking and my issues with the planning department's new strategy of cutting parking requirements as a way of getting rid of cars altogether. But ultimately, about 90% of Northampton household have vehicles. I've discussed that with you guys many times. So when we talk about getting rid of any parking requirements, the burden is a burden on developers. That burden is then passed on to the people living in the building who have to find street parking. The burden is passed on to every Northamptonian, because now we are effectively paying for the parking lots that these buildings have transferred to our main streets. When we talk about bringing new neighbors to the community or getting new neighbors in new housing, let's keep in mind, people with accessibility issues are growing elderly population, and anybody with kids needs to be able to park at their building. When I brought up this issue to multiple people within the city government and the consultants that you guys deal with, I'd been told the phrase, "Well, people can walk." And the reality is that not everybody can. And I think that's something that you guys are not necessarily thinking about. When Alex Jarrett showed that map before, I just want to note, I was in the yellow section, my neighbors are in the pink section. However, we both have a requirement of one parking spot because of the residential area that we are in. So that was a little bit of a misleading map. What you guys are doing now or proposing now is massively changing zoning. You are changing every single district's specific regulations and requirements. If you were to normally change zoning like that, you would have to be going into these communities, running it by neighbors. Also, I do not believe that you guys have been running the normal due diligence of traffic studies or parking studies. I know you guys rely a lot on the magical thinking of, uh, traffic evaporation, but that's really, again, that's, that's very, very wishful thinking. The planning department as now and the planning board, you're both there, can give all kinds of exemptions for housing. And without these changes, we still see there's something like a 90-unit building that's about to go up on King with something like 22 spots. I think we just need to recognize that that's not for the average Northamptonian. Most of us have cars because of the weather and the geography, our age, our health. That is part of a move to gentrify, and the reality is, is that that brings up rents. Right now, we are having people in affordable housing and low-income housing seeing their rents skyrocket by 40, 50%. That's because this city government is trying to attract wealthier people into the city and is trying to create high-density housing that is free of any sort of cost controls. This is a deregulatory structure, and I'm really, it saddens me that young progressives think that this is the way to get more affordable housing. The way to get more affordable housing is to regulate and make sure that that happens. It's not to just give developers everything they want and hope that they'll give us everything we need. We know for a fact that it doesn't work like that. And when a previous commenter talks about the traffic problems.
It's your time, if you can finish your.
Yeah, this is the last sentence. When the previous commenter talks about the traffic and parking issues in Cambridge and New York City, I want everybody to recognize that's who we're copying this model from. Those are the places that originally had these kinds of plans. We're outsourcing it from them by way of the exact same consultants. And honestly, it's much less of a fit even for here. So if you find yourself driving around a lot in Cambridge and New York, get ready to drive around a lot more in, in this city, which is terrible for the environment.
Thank you, Dan. Uh, next, we have Donald Darnell.
Thank you. I'm, yeah, Don Darnell, uh, and live in North map, Northampton Ward 2. I also drive my car in the city and park it, often downtown. I bicycle also in and through the city and lock it up downtown. And quite frequently, I walk, very occasionally take transit and park myself in various seats downtown. I have a much tougher time finding a spot to lock up my bike than to park my car. I think that's always been exclusively true. I have never, if I want to park downtown, at least I've always been able to just park in my neighborhood. Just, I know right where there's parking. So that surprises me a little bit to hear people complain about parking, though I do. I think this city has a lot going for it. You have wonderful form-based zoning codes, and they're well implemented, it seems to me from my experience. I've seen this council working on objectives to, or motions to support the building of a walkable, bikeable, healthy, beautiful, business-friendly, environmentally friendly community. And I agree, I think I'm sort of restating what, what you said, Counselor Elkins, that required minimum parking rules, minimum parking requirements for new developments especially, puts a kind of a cap on those sorts of efforts. And we've heard a number of stories about that, presenting constraints. And I think there's very good research. Donald Shoup was mentioned, but he has followers and people that have built on his research as well. I'll just point to, the state of Oregon was mentioned, and I really think that's an excellent example. And I've spent a fair amount of time in Oregon and particularly in Portland after that change. And it's a city and, you know, it can take some time to find parking, but parking is not a, a big problem there. Other communities I've been closer to include a, a large neighborhood development, much larger scale than what we're talking about here in Calgary, Alberta, the East Village, where the city required there be no surface parking lots, only street level parking. And then they waived, essentially waived minimum required parking for all new developments. And it was all new developments. So we got to see what developers did with that. And they did a variety of things. That community is now considered an innovation zone. There's lots of small businesses working there. If you go as a tourist to Calgary, you go to the East Village. It's a cool place to hang out. Sorry. And I'll just say, parking is not a problem. You know, there's, there are condo developments that have, or at least one that has no parking other than guest parking. And parking is not a problem in that community.
Great. Thank you. Online, we have Randy Saylor.
Yep. I'm not sure my video is working. Pardon me for that. I just wanted to speak in favor of the ordinance. I think it's a great, it's a good move forward for us. We, we make assumptions all the time about what people need or what every home or the average home needs in Northampton. Those are assumptions. It's, the reality is that people will make choices based on their needs. And some people, a lot of people don't necessarily need more parking where they are. So I think it's a, I think it's a great ordinance and I entirely support it. Cities all over the country are working towards this. The gentleman before me mentioned a couple. I'll add Minneapolis to the list of, of places that are moving forward with no minimum parking requirements. I think that's the future, and I think it's a good future for Northampton. Thank you.
Great. Thanks, Randy. Okay. And in the room, Chris Stratton.
Good evening. My name is Chris Stratton, and I've biked in from Ward Six, Redford Drive, to talk a little bit about the importance of parking for both bicycles and cars. And I guess I could say that in summary, I think this ordinance is premature. More information and more study is needed. Reducing car usage is a laudable goal, but frustrating car ownership creates unworkable lives. And it especially creates unworkable lives for some of our most economically disadvantaged residents. Two years ago, I became a first time homeowner, but I did so four miles outside of town because none of the condos I looked at had a really, had a place to store a bicycle. True bicycle storage for a bike that's of some quality is individual. It's in the unit. It's in a locked garage. Good bikes get stolen from common bike rooms. Meanwhile, outdoor bike racks are for a few hours only, and really only for less expensive or used bikes, like what I had to ride in here tonight. Before I bought in Ward Six, I rented in central Northampton, and it was great. I could walk or bike to most of what I needed to do. And I didn't own a car. Unlike when I lived in New York City, I couldn't do absolutely everything in Northampton without a car. So the truth is that not owning a car here only worked because I could go up a mile up the rail trail and borrow a car from my sister's family anytime I needed to. And I did that probably on average about once a week. And it also worked because I had the privilege of flexible remote work. If it was pouring rain, I didn't have to go outside that day. And finally, it worked because I don't have children who I needed to shuttle to activities or camps or doctor's appointments. It was just me and my quantity of groceries. Recognize, we, we need to recognize that Northampton without recourse to a car does not work. We don't have those support systems that more dense cities do. How many in city government truly live in a household that doesn't have a car, or the more common pattern of a car per adult? Being able to leave one's car parked without concern, with confidence for even days at a time, is actually really key to being able to make a lot of daily trips by foot or by bike. You know your car is there when you need it, but you don't have to use it today. This is, this is the win we can achieve. Car light, not car free. Fortunately, the proposal at thirty-three King Street, unlike some other locations, is a great place to build a five-story building. But the idea that we're going to put in ninety-four units with only twenty-two parking lots is going to create unworkable lives for the families who end up there. Additionally, the lack of parking means that the retail that was desperately needed on the first floor is going to end up some kind of overpriced boutique, not an affordable grocery option to offset downtown's effective food desert. This ordinance before you tonight is mostly about the areas of town where we still have some semblance of effective zoning. Haven't just thrown it all out the window. But the assumption in here that even the larger units are going to be a single car per unit seems very premature and like it's a stretch that's going to overflow onto neighbors. So I would ask, where's the evidence that our parking actually is being overbuilt? I'm, I'm almost done. Why, why should we waive this entirely as opposed to experiment with a streamlined variance procedure for, on a specific site? If someone wants to argue for why they should do less. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else in the, in the, anybody else online who hasn't spoken, want to speak? All right. I don't see any hands. We have one more person in the, oh, I just saw a hand go up. So I'll go up. Ryan Merton.
Did I be successfully, there we go. Hey, hi, everyone. Ryan Merton. I live in Ward Three. And I want to apologize for first not catching the name of the high school student who wrote that really stunningly well thought and well executed response. I too support this change. And to the same extent, I feel like this doesn't go far enough. I am a textbook example of why this change to the law would be great. I'm a four season commuter. I bike every day to East Hampton where I work at Valley Solar. We have kids going to childcare in the area and to school. And I biked my child to Bridge Street from Ward Three every day for four years. And I can tell you, it was a fine experience. I'd like to speak very briefly on what might be no longer a popular concept, but freedom and self-determination. I believe in the general wisdom of most people to make decisions that are right for them. And I believe in the free market's ability to help us guide ourselves to those decisions. If a homeowner sincerely believes that only one spot is the right decision and that five years down the road, they'll be able to sell their house easily, they'll take away some driveway and only have that one spot. If they believe that that will damage their equity, I guarantee you, they will not rip a spot up, just despite their face. In the same regard, it's hard for me to believe that any developer is not doing the due research on a multimillion dollar construction, knowing that there are people interested in renting who don't need or want to park their cars. And to that extent, I would only say, I trust people and I think they'll probably make the right decision for themselves. If the critics are correct, we'll see these new apartment buildings sit empty and no one will rent there. And the proof will be in the pudding. But I'm pretty confident that this is the right decision. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Now in the room, Ben Spencer.
Hello, everybody. I'm Benjamin Spencer. I'm a resident of Northampton. I'm an avid driver. I have a car. We have two cars in our family. Also have some bikes and scooters and our feet, so lots of ways to get around. I am in support of this ordinance. I think that this is a correction that we need to be making. I think for me, seeing, once you sort of see how we've overbuilt our world for cars, it's hard to unsee that. The vast expanse of empty parking lots, the, the, the space that we've dedicated to one mode of transportation over all else. So I, I see our city starting to make these corrections to help share our public spaces more equitably for all users. And I have to point out that, you know, every car we've ever owned was a used car. I don't enjoy the burden of car ownership. Lots of people can't afford to own cars. And so we need to build a world that allows those people to move safely and comfortably because car ownership isn't even a possibility for many people. So I think this, this small change, which is just removing barriers that'll allow us to put more homes in, in places where there's density, is a step in the right direction. I think we need to plan for the world that we want. I think that the evidence is in about how the planning that we've done in the past has worked out. And I think that this is, this is a great change. I'm really in support of the part of this ordinance change that encourages covered bike parking to be built and doesn't count it against open space. I think that's very important. I think covered bike parking is night and day different than just a bike rack. And I think it really adds dignity to the people who are using that mode of transportation. I only wish it could be retroactively brought into, into being because I see many apartment buildings with bike racks full of bikes. Clearly, people in those apartment buildings are getting around by bicycle, but those bikes are out there all in the elements all the time. So all in favor of covered bike parking. We've seen our world change. I've got two kids who are nineteen and twenty-one. One's got a license. Neither of them have cars. They don't care about cars. You know, their life is very different than, than in the past. And many people are working from home now, and the needs have changed. This is an ordinance change that I think reflects those changes. I support it. Thank you for making it happen.
Thank you. All right. Everybody in the room has spoken. So last call for anybody on the line who wishes to, to speak. That's okay. All right. So I'm not seeing any hands. So we will move on to talking amongst ourselves to some, we're not closing the public hearing yet. So if we make, I, I think in this situation, it's unlikely we're going to jump back out to, you know, outside of these bodies, but we're going to wait a, a little bit before we answer a closed public hearing. Anybody want to, I, I didn't hear any specific questions. Did anybody else? A rhetorical question, yes. But I mean, any, anything that we could need to direct toward. Chris thinks he had.
I thought I was kind of trying to ask, where's the evidence that parking actually has been overbuilt?
Okay. Well, note that. So the question was, because he wasn't the, was, what's the evidence that parking has been overbuilt? I can let Alex speak to that, but I think that any map that shows greater than one car per person, so anytime you get to point three and point nine, then I would point to that, to that as, as evidence of that, of more parking than, than what is, is required. But what are your thoughts on that?
Yeah. I mean, I think we certainly see that in any kind of sprawling type of development, like Stop and Shop, going up King Street, all of those that build for the busiest day of the year and are, are empty. Or, you know, lots of space at other times. But we also see that, that there's lot, there's lots of space. Like if we look at downtown Florence and we see that, you know, they, most of the businesses have their own parking lot. And most of the time, those parking lots are empty. And a shared, if, if there, if there was a shared parking, such as we have in downtown Northampton, then so much of that space would be freed up. So, you know, there's examples around. And if other folks want to speak to them as well.
I mean, go ahead, Carolyn.
Just going to speak to the residential piece regularly. When affordable housing developers come to the Planning Board for permitting, they're asking not to provide the two parking spaces per unit. So for example, I'm going to, I'm going to exclude the thirty-three King Street that hasn't come forward to the Planning Board yet. And it's in the Central Business District. We don't require parking now. But Valley's project on Bridge Road, their project on Millbank, the Lumber Yard. The Valley has come regularly to ask for a reduction in parking. And we don't really, the board has granted it, but it's all, I mean, it requires, one, they have proof from their own database that, from all of their clients that they serve and the residents who live there are not bringing vehicles. And so they have, that's always their, their rationale when they come to the board is saying, look, we have this long, this history of not needing this parking for our residents. We don't want to build it. But it sets up a barrier for applicants to, one, not know if the board will approve the reduction. And if it's more than a twenty percent reduction right now, it's a special permit. And also, if they've go down the road for designing a project that doesn't have the parking and then the board doesn't approve it, then that's an issue. But I think that's just evidence that there are many situations in which the parking that is required is not needed.
Oh, sorry. And I'd also point to developments where no parking is required and nonetheless, some parking is built. And the, the King Street is, is an example of that. No, no parking is required there. They're still going to be building a certain number of, of spaces, which, you know, suggests that, that developers calibrate to their need and their expected, the expected market who will be, you know, fill in those units and, and who it is, what market segment they are looking to serve. George?
Thank you. That's not working.
Let me turn it on.
So yeah, and Carolyn, I would add Live One Five Five to that list, too. There's no park in there. Granted, a lot of those units, RSROs and one bedroom apartments, but still there's, it would, it would be interesting to hear from some of those places, Live One Five Five, the Lumber Yard, from the, if it's created any kind of hardship on tenants. But right, when we look at a affordable housing unit and some of the people in those who live there, I think cars are certainly not one of their biggest possessions, for better, for worse. But just to stay on the data for a minute, the map that Counselor Geisland showed us, Geisland, I'm always doing that to you, Alex. It's a compliment. Counselor Jarrett from Ward Five showed us. I wonder where that data came from. Is it from the city's census form? And moving forward, because often we on the Planning Board say, well, this new unit's coming on, but the demographics in Northampton are changing. We're pretty sure people won't be bringing one and two cars to their new residences. How are we, how is the city prepared to track that kind of data?
So we do need to do an update for that. It takes a, it's a little bit of an effort to try to pull data sources together to do that, because you're pulling census, but then you're also pulling vehicle. because you're pulling census, but then you're also pulling vehicle records. And there's some privacy issues that have to be sort of scrubbed or looked at before. So we are in the process of trying to update that, but, um, it originally, um, was a project that was completed out of our office.
So I, I don't know how we, I don't think we build that into the ordinance, but I think it's pretty important for us to, to see that as we, these developments come online, to see if we are hitting the mark of the, the new residents, perhaps not staying within that category of point oh three to point oh nine in the downtown area. Um, that would be nice to be able to document. So thanks.
And I, I would think, as many people have mentioned, this is an incremental step relative to what's been, was, um, suggested by the, uh, the Healy, uh, Commission. And also relative to what has been, um, implemented elsewhere. And so, you know, I, so yeah, I mean, I think it's, it's something that will be looked at going forward as whether or not Northampton is the, uh, city that can take, um, the next step. And the important thing about this kind of zoning change is it, this is in itself incremental change. And by definition, zoning going forward is incremental, limited by how much development happens after it is passed, right? That's a self-limiting proposition because especially these days, because the cost of building and construction is so high. It's so hard to get, you know, uh, projects off the ground and, and for, and, you know, for all these reasons and things, it is not the case that, that we're gonna be, you know, building, you know, completely all the way down King Street. And I, I kinda wish we were, but we're not, we, we aren't anticipating that level of like sudden development. That means that this, you know, will, will be anything other than a, you know, building by building, development by development, um, change that we can see how it progresses. So.
I wanted to, to remind that, you know, there's no free parking. Someone is paying. It's either overtime and mortgage or rent or, uh, tax dollars for, or user fees for street parking. So it's currently a burden to tenants if they don't need the parking that their unit is required to have because they are paying for it. So just, just to bring that, that perspective in, I wanted to speak to public transit. One of the commenters, uh, talked about, uh, um, and around the sort of chicken and egg nature of, of where you need ridership, need to justify ridership, but until you have the frequency and the hours, you're not likely to get the ridership. And, um, we've really taken some, the PVTA is, and some of this is thanks, very much thanks to the fair share amendment, which has provided more money for, um, regional transit. And, um, the PVTA has taken some risks. Uh, they have, they now have, um, the G73 E-Bus runs every half hour, seven days a week from early morning till fairly late in, I mean, until at least nine o'clock at night, to Springfield. Uh, it's an express, stops at the Holyoke Mall and then it's in Springfield. I've used it, uh, quite a number of times to get to medical appointments or to connect to the train, trains down there. And that, that kind of frequency and that kind of speed can, makes a huge difference in the success. They have, yeah, the more they increase, they started with once an hour, then they went to every 45 minutes, then they went to every half hour. The more they did that, the more their ridership went up. And, uh, so that's a great success. And I, I hope that, uh, as we, as we can build more people who will use that service, I mean, as we can bring in more people who will use that service, that, um, that can continue to expand. And this, this is one, one element that allows that to happen, allows that density and that, that lack of, um, car ownership. I mean, we're still requiring one, so everyone's, every unit's gonna have one. But, uh, um, there's, you know, it, it's, it's, it helps for that density. And I guess I, I just, I don't usually talk about myself that much, but I do want to say that I've lived in Northampton for 27 years without a car. And, um, I've used, you know, walk, bike, public transit, um, Zipcar is fabulous or car rental, um, when I do need a car. And, um, I've made it work, made it work with the family. And, um, I have, I really appreciate the, the feeling, kind of the, the feeling of freedom and the feeling of, um, you know, when I bike down the, the bike trail to go to Stop and Shop, uh, which is right down the bike trail, easily accessible, um, that I get to, that I get to do that. And I don't have to drive in the car. So I'm really thankful that Northampton has built this, the, the networks that we have. And, um, I, I guess it's a little tangent from this specific topic, but just to say that, you know, my family is, and certainly one that does not need those extra spaces. And when I ride the bus, um, I see a lot of my constituents who are also in those circumstances, some by choice, some not, um, but, um, they, there are a lot of people in Northampton who, who do not use a car. And, um, we need to, those systems, um, and as I said, those, developing this, developing in this way allows those systems to thrive.
I can, uh, since, since we're telling personal stories, uh, you don't, I indulge me. I know, I'll keep it brief. I'm originally from Houston, Texas. So we can all know for sure that, um, what I, what I'm about to tell you is not a product of zoning because famously Houston doesn't have zoning. But, um, obviously I think most people understand Houston's a wildly car-dependent city, terrible public transportation, um, certainly in, in the, that lying areas, uh, in suburbs where I grew up. Well, now it's not so suburban, but, um, but, um, and still even in that context, I would say that, that parking was overbuilt and it was purely market-driven by, by what developers felt like people would pay for in their houses. But I grew up in a house that was really too small for our needs. I, it was, it was quite, it was quite tiny and it's, and, and it had three parking spots. And one of those parking spots was a garage that we never parked in and none of my neighbors ever parked in. It was full of stuff because we didn't have enough space in our house. Um, and many of our neighbors converted their garages to living space. Um, and meanwhile, you still had two parking spots on top of that. Obviously this is a much different city, but I, it just goes to show you and there, when you think about what it means to have overbuilt parking, it is useful to think about, you know, really car-dependent places and whether or not even they have overshot the mark at the expense of, of, of the housing needs of, of their residents. And I think we're much closer to the mark and we're getting closer to the mark with this legislation. And so that's, uh, so there you go. That's my personal story. Stacy, I thought, uh, were you about to say something? Okay. All right. George.
Oil is king in Houston, huh? Oil and gas. So I'm interested to know from the counselors if during the discussion, during the, the drafting of this, if you got some feedback from developers. I'm thinking of our planning board discussions and permitting like, um, Sunwoods Apartments up by Village Hill that had a minimal amount of parking. I'm thinking of some of the townhouses that have been built, perhaps in Florence. Have they, do they have a high vacancy rate because they weren't able to rent them? And that was the poison pill, as you said. I, I would love to live here, but I, there's no parking for my car. I just wonder what kind of input have developers had? I, I see there's only one here tonight, um, someone who often comes to the planning board meetings. But, uh, has there been any pushback from developers? I, we heard from Carolyn about the affordable housing, uh, the Valley CDC and others and, and their kind of, uh, concerns about it or their appreciation of this kind of zoning. But I wonder if any developers are upset about it because of what, how it might limit them? Or do they see that market the same way as we do here?
You're asking if developers would be concerned about this ordinance or concerned about the current requirements?
Concerned about the ordinance, um, you know? And I'm wondering if even the current requirements, if they, if that's, um, limited their ability to move some of their apartments, some of their, um, houses. And in turn, what would this, um, ordinance do to their market, so to speak?
I certainly haven't heard about any, uh, any concerns about the ordinance from developers, and, uh, or lack of ability. I, I know Carolyn is, is, uh, has more boots on the ground in terms of as people bring projects to her department. And, um, have, have you heard concerns regarding parking or?
Only in the, uh, the flip side or the current condition in that, um, the thinking about adding units and really having to calculate that open space because the more parking you're required to have means the less open space you have. So then you might not be able to do the four units, um, or what have you because you still have to accommodate the number of parking spaces. So we've, we hear that pretty regularly, that it's just sort of a check on, oh yeah, I have to redo my calculation because I don't know if I can meet the minimum open space requirement because I have to do the parking.
One thing I would add to, one, one thing I, uh, that was, uh, I think a product of, of developer input was the, um, the definition of taking bicycle, covered bicycle parking out of the, uh, the calculation against open space. Or, you know, the account, it still counts as open space. That was described as, as difficult for a development or a developer who wanted to offer more covered parking, bike parking. But previously that would have counted against their open space calculation. So, um, so this actually, so this was a product of feedback, but kind of more about the bike parking and, and the open space definition. Yep.
So just in, in central business, um, and central business, uh, the gateway, there's a minimal, um, you'll have to remind me, there's a minimal ratio for, for open space? Or is it 10%?
So the, the, um, the Form-based code districts don't have the percentages, um, like the other zoning. So it's the other, so it's the urban residential A, B, and C with minimum open space requirements. And remember currently the central business core and central business side street district don't require parking for new construction, um, now. So that's the existing condition. So.
They require a percentage of open space.
There is, there's a percentage of landscape, it's landscaping as opposed to a percentage of open space.
So my, my, my one concern is, is how we moved this way and they, um, that they don't have to provide any parking. So the tendency will be for a developer to build more units rather than provide more green space for, say, the residents of the building in order to maximize their return, I think, you know? And one of the goals, which are really explicit here and great, is we're doing this in order to provide, you know, a more green space, meet our climate goals, things of that nature. And something for residents on those areas. And, and, and I don't know if there's a way for us to, um, induce that kind of green space. Cause I'm concerned some of our larger apartments that we have, okay, lately, doesn't really have green space for the residents. And we've told them that they have Pulaski Park or we have school grounds. But I'm, I'm concerned that, uh, by reducing the parking even more, they may just maximize their units rather than providing some kind of alternative for the residents who live there.
So let me just clarify, because there's no, currently, there's no parking required. So this proposed ordinance doesn't really affect the central business district, core and side street except for there were two categories of uses that still required minimum parking. And it was hotels, which is what the, is, um, red line now is, um, hotels and nightclubs. But currently there's no minimum parking required for housing units. So, um, that, this ordinance won't affect the open space balance or, um, um, you know, the unit count in a place like central business district because it already doesn't have a minimum for residential. What would change would be in the gateway district and then mostly in all the residential districts. And the minimum, minimum open space requirement isn't being tweaked. It's just the amount of parking. So it should not, it would not affect the, um, required minimum open space in those other districts outside of downtown and Florence Center.
Thanks.
All right. Um, Ryan, I see your hands up, been up for a while and I allowed one, one question from the, from the audience. If you're there and you have a question, a brief question, um, we'll, we'll hear it.
Yeah. Uh, there's been a lot of talk on the focus on new large apartment developments. I'm curious what, uh, research and consideration was made into infilling uh, and what the likely fiscal impact would be as far as higher taxes if this would expedite ADU construction and so on.
Okay. Thanks, Ryan. I, I think this, this gets back to the Carolyn's answer just now, or the, the districts that allow that, um, those, that larger density already don't have parking requirements. So, um, uh, so the, they don't, this ordinance is not gonna apply to, to tho- those kinds of developments, um, in the central business district with those kinds of density.
But, but, um, the specific question about ADUs are allowed in the other districts. And so to your point, I think some of you mentioned it previously that people who want to build an accessory dwelling unit or a second unit, no matter the size, or if it's over, you know, a thousand square feet anyway, currently would be required to build two parking spaces for that new unit, still meeting the open space and may not then be able to build that unit because they're bumping up against the open space, um, calculation. So by reducing the number of parking spaces, it, um, might allow for those second units in residential zones, to be built and still meet the minimum open space requirement.
Right. And the, the people's utilization of the two-family by right zoning is, I feel like particularly important because keeping in mind, given our existing zoning, they're probably, if, if they're using it the way we, we hope people are using, building onto, uh, property that already has two spots. And so then if we require two spots more, then, well, that's a lot of spots, especially relative to the open space. So, um, that's, um, in, in addition to potentially curtailing the development altogether, it, it, it really does begin to add up. Um, so, um, alrighty. I'm not seeing more in the room. So, um, well, I'll tell you what, like, if, if we, if we don't have any, you know, more from the public, if we can close the public hearing and then we can, uh, then talk amongst ourselves, and, uh, we'll, we'll go from there. So can I hear a motion to close the public hearing?
I'm moved to close the public hearing. Second.
Of legislative matters, all in favor. I, none opposed.
From the planning board, is there a motion to close the public hearing? Excellent. From Cameron, second from George. All those in favor of closing the public hearing. Everybody.
Let the record reflect, they all silently raised their hands. All right.
Board has its habits.
Hate to make you talk. Um, okay. All right. Uh, so let's, let's have a little deliberation.
So just to stay on that two-family by right for a minute, kind of the last question. If an ADU is built under the new bike, um, regulations here, ordinance, does that new ADU have to have a, a bicycle hoop or a covered spot built and sewn on their plans? Trying to understand. Do you know, it says here that the residential one space per dwelling unit? How do we define that?
Yeah. Well, as I understand it, there's a lot of flex. Yeah, well, as I understand it, there's a lot of flexibility. At, at least 50% of the units on, on the property have to be long-term, which means covered. But those, that could be inside a garage, that could be against the wall with, you know, with a little overhang. There, it could also be outdoors, half, half of the total. Is, and Carolyn, is that accurate?
Yeah. So obviously, if it's one unit and you're only required to do one, you can't do half a unit. But yeah, it could be basement, could be garage, it could be, so in that case, when you, since you can't split it, then the one space, you just have to show where it is, and it would be covered.
So.
Probably 50% is required to be covered. But this just adds that, you know, before, it was a very small number, and the planning board has talked for a long time
Yeah.
about the fact that it was too low. So this is just ensuring that each unit has a bike.
Good. No, and it's great. I think we've argued for a long time that not having covered parking is a real detriment. Not having storage facilities, because so many units now are built on slab, and there's no basement storage, and it's really difficult for tenants, too. But builders seem to move around that. But, and we look at plans to come before us, and we count the, the spots for bicycles, which is understanding in congregate housing or businesses. But I, I guess now, from what I understand, the building inspector would look at a single ADU, or maybe we would, and ask that question about bicycle parking, just to make sure it's somewhat enforced. Okay.
While we're on the topic of bicycle parking, I have a question about the proposed revised requirements for hotels, motels, and bed and breakfast. The proposal is to revise that to 10% of the number of parking spaces or rooms, whichever is greater 100% long-term. I'm wondering where that calculation came from, and who is envisioned to be using that parking? I am not opposed to bike parking, but in that particular use, most people are not going to be, I don't think guests are going to be doing this unless maybe they're in the area for the grand fondo or something like that. So is it for employees? What's the kind of envisioned use? And where, what's the thought about this particular calculation for the number of bike spaces?
Carolyn did a lot of research to look at what other, other cities or towns are doing. Would you like to speak to that?
Yeah. So I looked at, I don't know, a handful of cities around the country to see sort of how they were addressing that. I will say that, you know, originally, as you can see, hotel, bed and breakfast were lumped in with residential, and it was 0.1 space per dwelling unit or room. And so that was all, you know, so if we had a 100-room hotel, that would mean, you know, what is that? Nine spaces, parking spaces or something. But, or, I'm sorry, 10. So if, so anyway, so we, looking at most cities around, they didn't lump those uses together, because obviously, they're very different. And then 10% was a number that some cities used. I mean, there's sort of, there's not one universal number, I have to say. So I think, yes, it would be for people who are working there, most likely. It could also be people who bring their bikes with them, and are doing, you know, bike tourism or something and staying in a hotel. But, you know, if you do the same, you know, 10% of the total number of parking spaces, if you have, you know, if there's 75 parking spaces, that's not really that much park, you know, bike parking, seven and a half spaces. So if you imagine the number of employees that might be going there, they can use that.
Hotels and such often have conference centers and bring in people locally, so folks can arrive, and, and not just for staying overnight. I know that there are studies that have been done around the completion of the Massachusetts Central Rail Trail and the bicycle, the overnight bicycle tourism that that's expected to bring. And we are at the end of that. And so very likely a place where folks will be biking and in, and will, will want to stay.
I have two other wording questions when we're ready for that.
Let me hear from Garrick, and then we'll come back to you.
Yeah. Since everybody else is telling their life stories, at least on legislative matters.
Yeah.
Okay. Let's keep it going. But just personally, myself, I've always rented in this area. Even when I lived in Amherst, I would take public transport here. And that's in a time when we didn't have zip cars or robust Ubers and, and whatnot that we have now. And I was able to find a way to make it. And even when I'd live, have lived in Northampton and rented, I was a one-family household until COVID, and I had to work in Holyoke and Springfield, late nights. And I really enjoy walking. And I like that this is kind of moving us towards, as a person who works in the service industry, I love being able to live close enough to walk to work and walk back. But I, I do have questions. Worker parking is, is a difficult thing, and Northampton is just laid out. It's, we're not going to solve it with this, but I just have to state that. The thing that I did want to talk about is some of the, talking about disabilities and folks who have disabilities. And I'm just wondering, when you guys were writing this, did you talk to the Disability Commission or anyone from that body, just to see what they thought about these changes?
No, we haven't spoken with the Disability Commission.
We, oh, go ahead. No, you go ahead.
I was gonna say, so the code, the building codes and the Architectural Access Board require accessible parking spaces for certain, you know, sized building. So this isn't saying you can't provide that. This is saying, you know, you're only mandated to have one parking space per unit. But that doesn't mean that a builder wouldn't provide more parking. And also, certainly, those, the other requirements that are outside of zoning that address the needs for accessible parking.
I, I would say that I don't think we're going to build our way out of parking demand enough so that everyone will always be able to park exactly where they need to. And that, the, the goal instead can be that if we need more accessible spaces, if we're seeing those fill up, and then we should be assigning more of those, and to make sure. And if that needs to happen in, in residential neighborhoods, then that would be appropriate to do. And I think that, you know, I've, I've certainly heard a feedback from different neighborhoods, and different, every neighborhood has different concerns. But there are some neighborhoods where it's, it's getting pretty full. And some of that's about, you know, workers, as you mentioned, who come in during the day. And some of that's about the, just the, the number of available spots. And that, that is something that we need to address on, you know, a neighborhood by neighborhood basis. I'm served on, served on transportation, the Transportation and Parking Commission, and, and we consider those-ish, those concerns. And we, we should, we, we should make sure that people know that we can look at, at what needs to happen, whether maybe it's residential permits, maybe it's time-limited parking. At certain times, there's different, different approaches to try to solve the problems.
Thank you. And the last thing I just wanted to say is that with the, the thought about building what we want, I, it does strike me because, you know, when people are talking about, there's like a food desert, you know, the more densely we pack things, creates the need for things like that. So, you know, the more we have residents living in these high clusters, the more likelihood that some of our empty storefronts will become hardware store, or a grocery store, or things like that, that we need as we become denser. So I am, I am for this ordinance change.
Thank you. Jenny, your quibbles?
My quibbles. They're, they're more clarification, because I guess when I, I read ordinance like this, I think if I can't make sense of it immediately, then it's possible somebody else might not be able to make sense of it, and therefore, maybe there's an opportunity to clarify. So bear with me while I figure out what my notes mean. Um. Okay. Under the proposed revised definition of open space, number three, it says dedicated open or covered bicycle parking that is visible on at least one side. I want to make sure I understand what that means. I think what that means is that you could not count bike parking that was, say, in a basement or fully indoor. So it has to be somehow separate, like you couldn't then remove part of your basement from your open space calcul, like, I can't, I don't totally understand. So can
Oh, sorry.
Can somebody explain it? And is there a better way to say it?
So this is what, these are, this is defining things that will not take away from your open space.
Yeah.
So previously, if any, even a partially covered, like, bike shed would count against your open space. So when you're supposed to have X number of square feet of open space, if you put covered bike parking on there, then that would, you, that might tip you under what the required open space was.
Yeah.
And so this is saying, basically, any kind of, basically, covered parking, bike parking, will not sort of destroy your formula for open, open space, which, which means it's, it should incentivize people building to, to, to do the kind of long-term, covered, more secure parking space. So we were imagining things like longer overhangs off of, longer overhangs, you know, off the side of a building, would, would not, would not count against it. If you did a three-sided shed with like a gate across the front, that would be visible enough, but also secure and long-term and covered. So, so that's, that's what it is. It's not meant to, it doesn't go into the bicycle parking definition itself.
But I think, to answer your question, I think the idea is legitimate bike storage and not filling up your yard with sheds and saying, these are all my bike storages. Don't count against open space. We won't, you know, it's got to be something that's easily, like, visible as, oh, yes, that's bike storage, therefore, it doesn't count.
Oh, right. Yeah, that was part of the conversation. Right. We wanted to disincentiv, we didn't want people to basically say their storage shed was bike parking, when otherwise, that shed would, would count against their open space calculation.
So is the idea that the storage is visible, or that the bikes themselves are visible? That's what I just, I understand the idea of it, and I'm in support of the idea of it, but I find the particular phrasing of it a little bit vague.
Yeah. The idea is that it is, it is open on one side, so you can see that it is bike storage.
Okay.
And that it's not, in fact, an enclosed shed that nobody can see inside of, and nowhere that it is, in fact, bikes, or not bikes.
Or cars.
Or, or, you know, something, or cars, or, you know, something that the property owner is saying is bike parking, but is not actually available, say, to tenants as actual bike storage.
Okay.
Might be another way to look at it. But we'd be open to suggestions if you have, if you think of. You don't need to come up with on spot, but if you.
Ponder.
Is that stipulation common in other cities that you guys have looked at? Like, that kind of seems like you're just inviting eyes onto bikes that are wanting to be safely stored?
It is, it is a product of wanting to not, to, to make sure that people weren't claiming sheds as, as bike storage specifically. But within that, people who are building can, can put in whatever security measures that they deem. So like, if you put a, if you put a chain-link fence or a slatted fence across the front of it, and put on padlocks, and put in, you know, put in separate, you know, to Mr. Strattan's point, you know, put in, you know, secure, separate, you know, like, units for the bikes, you know, whatever, whatever you can do to think, to make it safe and secure, turn it around so the, the open, you know, what is visible isn't open to the, the street and everybody walking by. I mean, but the, the point is, is that we don't want, we don't want people building properties, calling it bike storage, and then that not actually being available to, to, to tenants specifically.
I, I too want to say I'm, I'm in favor of, of this measure. But yeah, that, that last little bit of that line in particular, I don't know, I, I find counterintuitive, if you want to securely store bikes.
Let me raise another question, and perhaps we can ponder as we go if there's a way to improve that wording. But also, I agree, it does bring up some, there's a little bit of a tension between some of the goals there. On, also, under the bicycle parking for office, hospital, medical uses, and the line below it, manufacturing, industrial, utility, power plant, et cetera, two spaces per 10,000 square feet, minimum of two. So does that mean minimum of two regardless of size, and then two spaces per 10,000 square feet on top of that? Or is it, I, I, I actually don't know how to put those two requirements together. So again, I just ask, I'm in favor of it. Is there just a clearer way to lay that out?
Do you say again, Jenny, where you were there?
I'm in the table, I'm on page six, table of short-term and long-term bicycle parking requirements, the two lines for office, hospital, medical uses, and then directly below it, manufacturing, industrial, utility, power plant, et cetera, where there's a proposal to change those to two spaces per 10,000 square feet, and then semicolon, minimum two.
So the intention is that there will be at least two, even if you had a 5,000-square-foot office. And then, for every 10,000 square feet, above 10,000 square feet, there would be another two.
Say that second part one more time.
So for every 10,000 square feet above, the first 10,000 square feet, there would be another two.
So if you went to 15,000?
Would there be, would it, would, is that how you would interpret that? That there would be four required? Or would it be?
So I think if you had, I mean, I think you're right. So if you had less than 10,000, you still need one U rack that holds two bikes. But if you're, and, and so then 10,000, still two. 20,000, four.
Okay.
So is it, you don't hit four until you get to 20,000?
Well, I mean, we have a thing in the parking that if you have to, if you're, you know, you round up.
Okay.
After 0.5.
So at 15,001, you would round up?
Yes. Or maybe 60, whatever the math is, yeah.
We come after you with your, with our U, U bike.
Right.
Yeah, thank.
Doesn't seem to be a lot to me. Can anybody put this in context and tell me about a, a building of 10,000 square feet that might be office hospital or medical?
Well, you probably wouldn't have a hospital at 10,000 square feet. But it's just, the idea is there's a lot of space necessary to create a hospital space, or even office space. There's a lot of dead space. It's not really based on the total number of employees or people who might be going there, right? So it's a different calculation than what you would have for, you know, a theater or a gym, where you might have people packed in versus, you know, you just need more, like, open space in that kind of setting typically. So.
I think if the new medical building's down off Pleasant Street, bottom Pleasant Street by the highway, very, very limited bike parking there. They don't have a lot of wasted space in those buildings.
Yeah.
But they're certainly bigger than 10,000 square feet. And one hoop for two spaces seems to be very, very minimal.
Well, but so that is probably, I have to remember, but let's say, that might be 40,000 square feet. So then you'd have, you know, eight spaces.
Or then we should have some kind of loophole.
Uh, and long-term storage, I don't think is required for office.
It's proposed to be, of which 50% shall be long.
Oh, sorry, sorry. Yeah, I was looking about.
That's for office, hospital, but not manufacturing, industrial.
Yeah.
Now, we're encouraging employers.
George or Mike?
We're encouraging large employers to incentivize their staff to ride bikes rather than cars. It appears to me, I mean, we've been through this with Cooley Dixon and some others. I would think we'd want to encourage them to have much more covered parking for staff. Again, under the guise that if they, if we provide it, perhaps they'll start using it. I'm thinking of those really large employers. So I would suggest we go a little bit higher. They can always then say that due to their certain usages of that off that space, they don't assume that their staff, their guests, their customers will ride bikes, but I don't think that's, that's sufficient as we move forward with North Hampton.
Just what the amendment proposed?
I, I don't know. The amendment might be double that, four spaces per 10,000 square feet, which again, isn't a lot of square foot in somebody's large lot. So in the terms of a 40,000 square of building, then it would be 16 spaces, I think, if I understand it correctly. Eight of them, which would be covered. Just a suggestion.
I, I like where you're going. I'm just wondering for my own brain to figure it out. How, how many spaces can you fit in a regular parking space? How many bike spaces can you fit in a regular parking space? What is, what's the translation for that? There?
Our parking space?
Yeah. It was in one of the articles that you sent.
It said 12, which I scratched my head at. I saw that, Jenna.
Six hoops.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Six.
Makes sense.
Cause if a parking space is 18 feet long, so if it's going that way, then and you have six, so that's three feet per loop, basically, right? Two bikes on each side.
And covered something.
Yeah.
I mean, I'd, I'd, I'd be fine upping it. It's right, it's, it strikes me as a low risk proposition. I don't think, I don't think it's going to be a poison pill, so to speak. The other thing too about parking at places like this and at hotels is, you know, there's a tendency for those of us who don't, you know, work at hotels or work at hospitals to kind of go in terms of like, oh, when I go to the doctor or when I go to a hotel. But as Garrett is always, you know, is reminding us, is, it's really about, it's an employee amenity. You know, at least as much as it is for the sort of, you know, patients and, and all that kind of thing. So I'd, I'd be fine.
Yeah, I'd support that too, increasingly, especially if we're having, you know, additional housing downtown and expecting people not to have cars. We're going to be, and they maybe work at Cooley Dick or one of these places. They're going to need to bike or use public transportation. So offering additional bike storage makes sense.
So maybe, are there any other amendments that, because I'll, I can add one, maybe we could do them all at once? And vote, vote once for it?
Let's hear it.
Okay, so the other amendment is going back under the definition of open space under number four. All right, just gotta find it. Okay. Changing number four from terrace areas to ground dash level patios. And this is something that came out of ordinance or it was brought to the ordinance review committee as a suggestion from the planning department. So Carolyn, do you want to speak to why this wording?
It's really just, I think clarity and just people don't typically say that I'm building a terrace in the back of my back, you know, in my yard. So I think for people to understand what it means, it's just sort of, you know, outdoor living space essentially.
Are there any other proposed amendments?
Still struggling a little bit over number three on that list, but I, I'm not totally sure how to improve it. I think the problem that I raised was that I just simply couldn't quite make sense of what it meant. But then Cameron brought up a, I think it was Cameron brought up a secondary issue, which is that if it has to be visible, then it is well, potentially less secure as well.
Another thing too is it's dedicated open or covered by, so there are some, some ways of building a, a, like a bike pad for storage. It was completely open, that would count against your open space. And that was thought to be a disincentive as well to providing parking, much in the same way that like a patio would. So I, so, so, so that's one thing to keep in mind is that this isn't meant to solve the problem of what is the best and most secure kind of bike parking that, that, and, and let's be specific landlords are offering to tenants, I think, is, is what we're really talking about here. It is, it is, it is solely meant to say, this will not detract from your open, open space requirement. So, and, and we just put in a, a section about defining a little bit about what the covered biking, bicycle parking was to, to, to stay away from, again, you know, some, something being claimed to be the, for the benefit of the residents living in the building that is actually used in a different way that doesn't benefit them in the way that we intend. So.
I mean, I would also say that it doesn't, it's just an allowance to, to create sort of not a deterrent for putting some kind of covered or uncovered bike storage. So to the extent that someone wants a fully enclosed bike storage, then that doesn't, that, you can still do that. It would just mean that that's going to be counted against your open space. If you want a fully, you know, walled and invisible, you know, you can't see inside what's in this building, then it just means it's part of covered, your coverage calculation.
I mean, I'm not going to hold up the ordinance over that, but.
Well, if you, if you, if anybody has a better way to put this. In council, I'm, I'm sure we would, you know, at lea, at least consider it. Yes, George?
I just want to go back to Counselor Perry's comment about the parking for handicap parking, as we commonly refer to it ADA parking. So no one, nowhere in this ordinance do we reflect, reflect on that. If for instance, there's no parking at a complex, what then informs the applicant about putting in so many ADA spaces? Is it the federal legislation?
No, it's the Architectural Access Board has requirements for buildings of certain sizes.
Okay. Cause now in our code, I think when we see a parking lot plans come to us and they have 25 spaces or 15, we say there needs to be one handicap space for every 15. How do we?
No, we don't. The zoning doesn't dictate that.
Okay.
I'm pretty sure it doesn't because it's, because that is like outside of our jurisdiction.
So I may be confusing that with electric stalls for charging cars. Sorry. I don't mean to conflate the two. Is there any reason to put any language in here about the architectural board? And the mandate around, or is that something we just assume?
I don't think we should because this is local zoning. That's a completely separate entity that is enforced elsewhere. And so I don't think it's appropriate to, to try to mix those different jurisdictions.
I have one other question in the table of use when it comes down to theater. I just want to check my math. Theater, gymnasium, auditorium, church or similar place of public assembly with seating facilities. We redlined six seats of total seating capacity. And in other districts, we have three seats of total seating. So if a Bombix is built up in Florence and it has 100 seats capacity, they need to provide parking for 33 or 44 cars. Is that correct?
Cause it's not in the central business district.
Cause it's not in the central business. So they're mandated to do that. Okay. And within all the language here, we're really talking about minimums, reducing all the minimums. Nowhere do we have a ceiling, right? On the maximum amount of parking somebody can provide?
In the planned village district, we do, but that's it.
Okay.
Well, plus whatever is dictated by open space, unless you put it underground.
Right. There's a strength about it, but somebody could say they want this much more, this many spaces. Okay.
Since, since you brought that up, the, in the table of use for the off-street parking regulation, that particular line, theater, gymnasium, auditorium, church or similar place of public assembly with seating facilities, is that intended to be different from how it's spelled out in the bicycle parking list, which is a much longer and more specific list that includes takeout or sit-down restaurant, bar, nightclub, YMCA, library, et cetera, et cetera?
Yes, different parking requirements.
So I would move a positive recommendation to city council for legislative matters with the two amendments. One is under the open space, number four, change terrace areas to ground dash level patios. And then in the office, hospital, medical, or this is in the bicycle parking section, office, hospital, other medical uses to, to change two to four, four spaces per 10,000 square feet, of which at least 50% shall be long-term, minimum two. Does that makes, wait, does minimum two make sense?
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
Because when would you ever have?
Minimum four.
Minimum four. Okay. So the amendment is both of those. Is there a second?
I would second that with a caveat that if we come up with better language for the one visible side, we can include that because it is sticking in my head too.
Yeah. Well, this is now on the floor, but there could be a further amendment. So.
Right. And there's room before, when we get to council to, for a tweak if we need. Okay. Any thing else from legislative matters? All right. All in favor of a positive recommend, do I, I don't need to do, do I need to do a roll call? No, all in favor of a positive recommendation, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. None opposed, who, and so this will go back to city council with a positive recommendation from legislative matters.
Planning board folks, more recommendations, discussion, emotion?
There's always more.
I'm going to make a motion to positively recommend, how do we say? As amended, yes. Positively recommend this legisla, legislation as amended.
A second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Silent hands are raised.
Aye.
Enthusiastic hand raising. All right. Very good. Um, very good. Well, so that concludes our business. No further items referred to committee, no, no new business? No, there's not. Okay. Did I have a motion to adjourn?
I moved to adjourn.
One report has two things after you're done.
Oh, okay. All right. No discussion on adjournment. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, none opposed. So legislative matters is out.
We just have two A and Rs. That's it. And I would like to say, I don't think we have a food desert officially because I think State Street Market and Stop and Shop would be pretty upset about that.
That's it.
Yes. Okay, so we have at, this is a modification, a new parcel being created on Terrace Lane. Hatfield Street Terrace Lane, 50 feet of frontage. It's not a subdivision because they meet the minimum. Frontage along Terrace Lane. So it's just a small lot. It's actually 55 feet of frontage. So I just need.
Wait, I, I would suggest that I move it up the legislative, sorry, I'm trying to think of Terrace, Terrace Lane?
Yeah. So near the cemetery out on Hatfield Street and Bridge Road. Well, you know where the, where the bike path comes in by the concrete batching plant?
Okay.
Right up in that area. So that would be over there.
Questions or a motion?
Make a motion to reset the amendment to A and R in Florence.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
And the other one is just a swap of land, so not a new lot being created on Chesterfield Road. It's just this triangular sliver here going from one parcel to the other. So it's not, since it's just going between property owners, it's not creating any lots, not a new subdivision.
This looks live here?
Yes.
And presumably they both maintain, looks like lots of frontage.
Yes. Yeah, there's no, if the front, the, it's 19 feet along the street and it's just going from one parcel to the other.
So it has something to do about this side? They're.
Yeah.
Going to build on the side for one or the other?
Um, yes, and a shed. It's close to the front.
Visit visible, please, visible. You said Chesterfield Road?
Yes.
Is there a motion to endorse the A and R on Chesterfield Road?
I make a motion to endorse the A and R on Chesterfield Road.
Second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Motion to adjourn at 8:39.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Second.
Aye.
Aye.
Well done, Jenna. And again, Sarah Howard, thanks for coming to the show.